Ready, key? All right. We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pokencourt?
Here.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Here.
Councilmember Scrivner?
Here.
Mayor Proton Davies?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here.
Everyone is present, thank you.
If you please stand for invocation. This evening we have Bishop Paul Eisenzimmer. Eisenzimmer, good evening.
Good afternoon.
All right. I didn't do that too many times. Thank you for being with us.
My pleasure.
Oh, my kids.
Ode to your kind and gracious heavenly Father, we come before the grateful for this opportunity that we have to meet together as a city council. We're grateful that we live in a country that allows us to do so. Also grateful for the time of year which it is and ask that Thy Spirit would be here with us, that we may be able to discuss the things of the city in a kindly manner and that we may be able to help this city grow. But also ask that that would help us to remember that we're with Thy Word and remember our Savior, that we may be a little kinder and a little nicer to each other. Pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Christina, would you lead us in the pledge?
Please join me in the pledge to the greatest nation in the world.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first item is our consent agenda. These are considered not controversial and routine by staff. Is there anyone in the public that would like something removed for a separate discussion? On the council?
Do I have a motion to approve as presented? Who'll make that motion, Mayor?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Pokencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Scrivner?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It's a five-zero vote to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any audience oral or written communications that something that someone would like to bring to the council's attention that's not on the agenda this evening? All right. Item number three under the City Clerk's report. Good evening.
Good evening, honorable mayor and councilmember. As you know, the city council appoints two members to the Tehachapi Valley Recreation and Parks District, the other three appointed by the county. One of those terms is coming to an end here. It will expire on February 2nd, 2023. That's for Sandy Chavez. So we're asking that the council direct staff to advertise for the appointment of one board member to the Tehachapi Valley Recreation and Parks District with a term to expire on February 2nd, 2026. The appointment should take place during the second meeting in January.
Any discussion? Counsel, go ahead and motion.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Pokencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Scrivner?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a five-zero vote to direct staff to advertise for the appointment of one board member to the Tehachapi Valley Recreation and Parks District with a term to expire on February 2nd, 2026.
Thank you. Item number five, dispersments and bills for RSI Petroleum.
Mayor Smith, I need to recuse myself because I'm an employee of RSI Petroleum.
All right. Is there any public comment? Any council comments? Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Pokencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Scrivner?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a four-zero vote to approve the dispersments and bills for RSI Petroleum with a recusal from Mayor Proton Davies.
Thank you. Okay, next item is our Assistant City Manager's report. Good evening, Corey.
Good evening, Mayor Smith and councilmembers. This evening I have an amendment to the lease agreement between the Tehachapi Mountain Rodeo Association and the city of Tehachapi. This item actually speaks to item number seven, which will be given by our Public Works Director. But given my fast bull writing experience, I was told that I need to present this one. All 2.8 seconds of it. So as the council is aware, the city has an active lease with the Tehachapi Mountain Rodeo Association for the rodeo and event center on our non-aeronautical land at the north edge of the Tehachapi Municipal Airport. And they host several events annually. And a portion of those revenues are paid to the airport as lease payment. So it's come to our attention that a portion of their current lease, which is on their 2012 amendment description, was included mistakenly. It's also being leased currently. It falls inside of the encirclements of our wastewater operations. And as you can see, we're looking to remove this about five acre parcel. It, like I said, was mistakenly included in the 2012 lease agreement. And it doesn't impact their operations at all. They're not used that. Matter of fact, it let some, it became a boneyard for a while. We had to ask them to kind of clean it up some old leashes and stuff. So that will also go away. And it's already actually been cleaned. So it will no longer be a part of the lease. And that's what we're just asking for here tonight on the amendment is to remove those five acres from the lease. And as you can see, you can clearly see what is now included and not included as part of their lease. No other changes to terms or conditions of the lease. We did present this to a few members of TMRA, and they didn't have any objections because it does not impact any of their operations. And they're expected to probably, I believe, vote on this at their meeting coming up at the National Finals Rodeo this week or next week. So, yeah, this week. So we should have their formal approval. But our recommendation tonight is to approve the lease amendment between the city of Tehachapi and the Tehachapi Mountain Rodeo Association and authorize the mayor to sign. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any public comments? Council comment?
Do we have any plans to use that or utilize that for anything?
Next item will be, yes. Don's got that and very next item. So if you want to get this cleared up first and then get that to the, as part of the next lease.
With that, I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you.
Mayor? Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Pokencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Scrivner?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It's a five-zero vote to approve the lease amendment between the city of Tehachapi and the Tehachapi Mountain Rodeo Association and authorize the mayor to sign.
Thank you, Corey. Public Works Director?
Good evening. How you doing, Don? Doing great. Thank you, Mayor Smith and councilmembers. So, yeah, this next item will actually put that area you just released from TMRA to good use. So the Public Works Department, as you know, leases property from the airport fund for our reclamation process to dispose of our wastewater effluent. So the wastewater division uses this property to dispose of wastewater effluent by growing crops, mostly consisting of alfalfa. And most of the areas that we use currently are, is the area to the east of the rodeo grounds and event center. So that's primarily the area that we currently use, although we do occasionally dispose of the effluent in other areas within the boundary of the red area. In all, in all, there's actually 81 acres there that we have available to us to use. Portions of it are irrigated, portions of it aren't. But we occasionally use all of that area at one time or another. In recent years, the operation and maintenance of the reclamation area has been performed by city staff, primarily from the wastewater division. Staff time required to operate and maintain the reclamation area averages one person for basically full-time six months out of the year. So our growing season is from April 1st through October 1st. That's the air at that time when we are permitted to add water and grow crops over there. Over the years, the city has been approached by numerous farmers and ranchers interested in using that property for growing alfalfa or growing other crops. Or most of them want to just put their cows out there and get free feed for them. So, you know, we've considered those options over the years, but we really had, we got to the point where maybe we should really investigate this more formally. So we wrote an RFP, a request for proposal, in October, and we solicited bids from farmers. We advertised publicly for that. And there was one particular farmer that had contacted us recently that we specifically sent the RFP to. And we did get two proposals. And one of those proposals was from Tehachapi Farming and Ranching Company. The proposals were all reviewed, and it was determined that that was the only proposal that was determined to be complete and responsive. Tehachapi Farming and Ranching has extensive experience doing this exact same thing. They grow alfalfa using wastewater at the Delano Prison. And they also do other, use other wastewater. I'm not sure exactly the agency, but they do grow alfalfa on airport property down in the valley as well. And they've been involved in farming and ranching for, I think, between the two of the owners, they've got 40-something years of experience in farming. So they're not new to this. Tehachapi Farming and Ranching plans to plant and utilize all 81 acres with a mixture of small grains and alfalfa to be sold for feed locally. And they're very adamant that, yeah, this is going to be a new source of feed for local people, whether it's other ranchers or just the general public to use. And of course, their operations will include normal farming operations with disking and plowing and planting and irrigating. And they do plan on using a water truck as needed to prevent any kind of dust or for dust mitigation. All reclamation area operations will continue to be in compliance with all established airport operating procedures as well as complying with the state water resources control board for any Title 22 regulations as far as the use of that water and the handling of it and things like that. They're already experienced in doing that, as I mentioned. All equipment access for the farming areas will be through the north gate at the airport and ultimately entering through the rodeo grounds gate. They will not be entering through the airport property proper. So the revenue generated from this farm lease will be, the first year is zero. They don't plan on making a profit. They are going to actually spend the first year really getting the land into a good condition and where it's usable and actually farmable. And then after that, it will become $61.75 an acre per year. That's roughly $5,000 for the following four years. So wastewater staff time will also be reduced by about 1,000 man-hours per year. So that will be a good opportunity for us to use those people somewhere else. So staff's recommendation is that you approve the lease agreement between the city of Tehachapi and Tehachapi Farming and Ranching for 81 acres of municipal farmland and authorize the city manager to sign.
Okay.
I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any public comments? Counsel?
Don, this is totally no human consumption.
That's correct.
When I was reading it, I go, oh, I hope so.
Yeah, that's part of the Title 22 regulations. And of course, it's part of our permit for disposal.
Thank you.
It is treated water to secondary?
Secondary treated water, yeah.
And it's allowable as a surface irrigation versus overhead irrigation?
Actually, we're allowed to do either. We're overhead irrigation or flood, either one. Their plan is to do flood irrigation at this point. They may eventually get to the point where they do overhead irrigation, but there are requirements for them to ensure that nothing leaks the property and things like that. So there are certain requirements that the state has on that.
We've done this in the past.
We have. This is just a more refined process than we're doing now. So really, it's a win-win. We're going to save 1,000 man-hours. We're going to get a little extra revenue. It's going to look nicer. And the lease has an easy exit point for us. If this doesn't go well, then we can exit. I expect it to go very well. Don and his team have put a lot of effort into this. The farming company that has been selected, Tehachapi Farming and Ranching, thank you. Don's right. They do this already in other communities. So we feel very confident this is going to be a win-win for the look, the feel, the budget, and the taxpayer at the end of the day, the ratepayer in this case.
Good.
And second, the owners of Tehachapi Farming and Ranching also live in Tehachapi, not in town, but in the area. So they're local.
Good. I like that. All right. Any other discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Pokencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Scrivner?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It's a five-zero vote to approve the lease agreement between the city of Tehachapi and Tehachapi Farming and Ranching Company for 81 acres of municipal farmland and authorize the city manager to sign.
Thank you. Item number eight.
Thank you very much. The next item is something that Jane, I've actually been working on for quite a while along with TMRA. But as you know, the city and TMRA have been partners, partners for more than 50 years. I actually tried to do a little research on that.
Fifty-five, I think.
Fifty-five, yeah. It's been a long time that we've been partners with them. And part of this partnership involves the city owning certain pieces of the event center and rodeo grounds. So specifically, the city owns two of the three sets of grandstands at the rodeo arena. You can see it there on the screen. The city had purchased those, particularly the ones on the west side in the blue. They purchased, the city purchased those in 2012. And those were installed as a temporary installation at that time, which is allowed by code. But, you know, 10 years is a long time for those to be there on a temporary installation. So we would really, this staff would really like to make any retrofits necessary to get those up to current code and consider them at that point a permanent installation. So that's kind of the gist of this staff report. So the city would like to retrofit the existing city-owned grandstands to meet existing building code requirements for a permanent installation. The modifications include additional cross-races, welded structural connections, and additional footings. City staff and TMRA have solicited numerous contractors, and we've been really working on this for probably about nine months, trying to find a contractor who is, was interested and willing to do this work. Unfortunately, we had a very difficult time finding anybody. We did finally come across Mergles Steel Fabrication, somebody that I've actually worked with in the past. And they were willing to propose to furnish material labor and equipment to structurally retrofit the city-owned grandstands per engineering drawings which we had prepared. We had prepared by consultant. And their bid was $78,600. And that's for the structural modifications themselves and does not include the footing modifications. We plan on getting a different contractor to do that work. The impact fiscally, we did budget $100,000 for this in our budget for this year. So that leaves us about $21,000 for the modifications to the footings that are required. And that's not, it shouldn't be too significant on the footings. So our recommendation is to award the Tehachapi Event Center and Rodeo Grounds grandstand retrofit project to Mergles Steel Fabrication in the amount of $78,600 and authorize the city manager to approve any necessary change orders up to a maximum of 10% of the original contract or $7,860. Answer questions if you have.
Thank you. Any public comment? Counsel, any comments?
I just think this is really, I'm glad to hear that we're making these improvements for all the reasons you stated, safety. And I love the fact that we're highlighting this natural partnership with the rodeo that's been in place for so long and is such an identifying characteristic in our community. So I'm grateful that you were able to find somebody to do the work. And it sounds like, you know, great timing. And, you know, we did what we could while we could. And it's, I think, the right, safe thing to do it now and secure that.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'll also make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Pokencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Scrivner?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It's a five-zero vote to award Tehachapi and Sinar Rodeo Grounds grandstand retrofit project to Mergles Steel Fabrication as presented.
Thank you. Development Services Director report. Good evening.
Good evening. I've got a few for you tonight. All right, item nine. The first item I have for you is the enhanced striping project award. Let me just get my stuff oriented. Back in the middle of 2021, we were awarded a Highway Safety Improvement Program grant. That's HCP is the acronym for that. Those are safety funds. They typically are smaller grant programs, and they're associated with traffic safety principally. So we applied for a standard grant. Basically, they have an over-the-counter version of grants that you can get by just applying. You don't, you're not in competitive grant application with other agencies. For edge line and center lines on various roads within the city limits, for four minor arterial and two major collector roads. These are great projects for us because, as you guys know, with winter and the cinders and dealing with snow, we lose our striping as time goes on, especially on a major road. So we budget for and spend money every year on restriping our roads come springtime. And so if we're able to use the state's money for that purpose and put in more expensive striping, thermoplastic striping, it tends to last through a couple of winters. So these projects just help us keep our budget in balance and help us to take care of things that we would otherwise pay for in a different way. So that was the nature of the project. In October of 2022, we advertised for this project, and we opened bids for the project on November 16th. The results of the bid opening are included in the bid packet. We received two bids. And we reviewed those bids in accordance with the Public Contract Code and confirmed that the low bid provided by Superior Pavement Markings has been deemed responsive and responsible. We did receive one bid package after the deadline. I simply note this for the sake of the file. FedEx doesn't always show up on time up here the way they do in other communities. And so every once in a while, we get a bidder who thinks they're going to get their bid on time that way. Did not happen. Procedurally, we do not open those bids. We inform the bidder of that, and we return the bid unopened, which is what we did for this item. So we have no idea what their bid price was. But that's the rules of the game. Fiscally, this project was funded with no match requirement. We have a $215,000 program for the project, and as such, the project is fully funded. I therefore recommend that you award the enhanced striping project to Superior Pavement Markings in the amount of $186,049.90 and authorize the city manager to approve any necessary change orders up to a maximum of 10% of the original contract or $18,605. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Any public comment or questions? Counsel? Any questions?
Just looks better when they're done properly. It looks great.
All right. Do I have a motion then to approve?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Pokencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Scrivner?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It's a five-zero vote to award the enhanced striping project It was a five-zero vote to award the Enhanced Striping Project to Superior Pavement Markings as presented.
Thank you. Item number 10.
Very good. Second item for you is an agreement with the Community Development Activity, Community Development Block Grant Program, excuse me, for the Northside Neighborhood Improvements Project Phase Three, I know the, yet another acronym, so hopefully you all remember this, about every three years, we gather up our allocation from the County of Kern for Community Development Block Grant Funds. As a reminder, we don't tend to get much, these are funding that are from HUD, Housing and Urban Development Department, and they're based upon the percentage of your population that's below or low income or very low income, and so you get an allocation of money based upon how many homes within your, residences within your community fit in that category, and the funds are restricted to be spent within those communities that are targeted and identified in that regard. So we're limited in both, we get about $55,000 every year, which, and we are allowed to aggregate up to three years before we execute a project on those, and our area in town that meets the designation is generally speaking, the area north of the railroad tracks that's part of the, the original or older part of downtown, so the north side of the tracks is the simplest way to put it, and so our three-year allocation totals approximately $166,000, which I know sounds like a lot of money, but in my world is not a very large sum of money, and it comes with it the, the regular allotment of paperwork and compliance activities that HUD requires. So we do these projects, and we, we have, for the last, I think this is the fourth cycle now, we've targeted pedestrian improvements in these neighborhoods, slowly building sidewalk out block by block in that area, feel like that's, the previous efforts have been pretty successful at tidying up the neighborhood and improving the look and improving access. So the project this time is to construct sidewalks on the south side of I Street between Lehman-Davis, north of the Union Pacific Railline, again, the money does not allow us to go very far with it, but again, will, our proposal as staff is that we simply continue to do this, marching through that neighborhood. We did apply as a side note for an ATP grant to do all the rest of the sidewalks, we were not successful in that ATP grant in this cycle, so we're continuing to keep an eye out for a future cycle for that, but that's a side note. So fiscally, CDVG funds are allocated, design and construction efforts and the intended scope of the project are fully within the grant fund eligibility, we intend to design the project, we typically design with our own funds because that simplifies the compliance process with HUD significantly, if we only are asking for money in a single phase of the development of the project. So we're proposing approximately a $200,000 project with the city delivering about $30,000 to cover the design expenses and the remaining coming from CDVG. So with that as background, my recommendation is that you approve the agreement, that's what we're doing tonight, sorry, between the city of Tehachapi and the county of Kern for the Community Development Activity for the Northside Neighborhood Improvements Project Phase Three, CD number 2021.1, and authorize the mayor to sign that agreement. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Any public comment? Any council comments or questions?
Another good project for the, for the area, I always get some feedback when it's completed, and it's, and it just, we're putting the pieces together.
Step us down, we'll get there. All right then, do I have a motion?
We'll make that motion, Mayor.
One second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wickens?
Yes.
Councilmember Pokencoys?
Yes.
Councilmember Scribner?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a five-zero vote to approve the agreement between the city of Tehachapi and the county of Kern for Community Development Activity for the Northside Neighborhood Improvements Project Phase Three.
Thank you. Item 11.
Very good. Mayor, council members, the third item is the Program Supplement Agreement to Administering Agency State Agreement for Federal Aid Projects, I'm not going to read the number, I'll read it at the end. So this is fairly perfunctory, we do these several times a year, we have a master agreement with Caltrans for any grant funds that we receive from the state or the federal government for the purpose of road rehabilitation work, we have our annual, or our every other year allocation of regional surface transportation dollars, RSTP money for the, and we've targeted that money for the rehabilitation of Alley Boulevard between Curry Street and Beach Street, so there's a depiction of that for you, that's what we had allocated, applied for our monies and received our allocation for that purpose, so we have beautifully been moving forward with that paperwork, and certain projects, RSTP being included, require a program supplement agreement, which means just a supplemental agreement to our master agreement with Caltrans, so that's what we're here for tonight, is we are simply asking that you approve the program supplement agreement for this project, so mostly this is an introduction of the project to you all and to the community as well, so we are ready to begin to design this project and, and need your blessing on this agreement to spend those funds. So my recommendation is that you adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign and execute the program supplement agreement to administering agency-state master agreement number 095184F15, project number STPL518442.
Was that never again?
The 42 is maybe the only thing that's really of value, the very last number is sequential, so that's 42 projects we've done under that master agreement, and since I've been the city engineer, I think we started in maybe the tens or the teens when, 18 years ago, so we've done about 30 projects in 20 years, so that's a pretty good rate, actually.
Any public comment? Any council comments or questions? And this has to be on an arterial, correct?
Yeah, there's a functional classification, there's a list of roads we're allowed to spend this money on, we cannot spend them on local, just local serving roads, they have to be on roads that have regional value, so, and Valley frankly is ready, it needs it, we think this is a good project.
There's other streets that are worse than, people will say, well, why didn't you do that one first, but it has to be done on an arterial.
That's right.
It qualifies.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wickens?
Yes.
Councilmember Pokencoys?
Yes.
Councilmember Scribner?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a five-zero vote to approve the resolution as presented.
Great. These are good projects. Thank you, Jim. City managers report.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor Smith. A lot of good things happening at the city of Tehachapi, it's been a good year, and we expect to have a good year next year and beyond. Hamet Jones is in the audience representing our Finance Department, but I wanted to publicly thank him, we received a certificate of excellence in finance reporting from GFOA, our Government Finance Officers Association, these awards are a big deal, that means we continue to strive for excellence and the reporting and the budgeting and how we, we produce and present the public's dollars, so I'd like to thank Hamet and his team and congratulate on him on that, I know that Key helped him with the press release that went out and thank the, the press for pushing that along also because it's very important. The other thing is, you know, we've been talking about and planning this hometown Christmas event that happened on Saturday, it was a stunning success, too many people to really thank, a great partnership with the Chamber of Commerce and, and downtown businesses, but I just want to thank everybody, and I think we've hit on another great event, we'll continue to plan this, the budget was non-existent, quite frankly, and our team, Paul McDonald, Paul Burgs, Chief with our Police Department, all of the nonprofits that came downtown, Key and Jessica, I said I wasn't going to name names, but I just did, and there's so many more, but it was just a great success, we were blessed with, with nice weather, and from sunup to sundown, it was a great event, so thank you to everybody that participated in that.
At some point, will we be able to change the route to Tehachapi Boulevard, we've talked about it in the past.
The parade route?
Yes.
Funny you should say that.
You know, I bring it up from now, now and again.
Actually, we, we haven't talked about changing, I remember during the down, the first phase of our downtown project, we had to move it from F to Tehachapi Boulevard, it's on 15 years ago, that was, that was a semi-success, if you will, traffic patterns, you know, can begin to get a little confusing, but we've talked about making some, suggesting some different changes to the parade length and how it's set up, because there are large gaps in the parade sometimes, and when you're a spectator, you want to view it, you know, kind of bing, 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 not like the Rose Bowl, that, that intensity, but certainly, it's something that we were kicking around, that's for sure, public safety is always the first and the last thing that we talk about when we have these sorts of meetings with our partners.
And then lighting.
Lighting too, so it's a Christmas parade, a light parade for sure, we've also talked about some kind of moonlighting or something that's, this, this parade, there were so many, it's, it's the biggest parade I think I've ever seen, there were so many spectators, and so many floats, the floats were amazing, it was really creative, and so what a great item to talk about, right, how we're, we're showcasing our community and our businesses, it's a good thing.
I think if you take it down Tehachapi Boulevard with the little snowflakes and the lights, it'll be really good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe.
And then the spectators can read this stuff better.
There you go.
There you go, there's always a plus.
There's always something to, to make it better, but right now, we have, I think, one of the best in Kern, we have a great chamber, great businesses, great support from so many, it's a good time.
It shows.
It shows.
All right. Anything else?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. John?
Ditto on everything for the parade, it was great, people, I've had nothing but good comments about the parade, also, don't forget the symphony is coming up on Friday at the Kendri Oaks Baptist with the Messiah, if you haven't had the privilege of seeing...
The whole Messiah?
Ah, I don't know how much they do, anyway, probably not the whole thing, parts, anyway, they've done it for years and they're doing it again, and I think with COVID, you know, we missed them, so they're back, so anyway, that's about it, I think, yeah, that's it.
Susan?
Well, I was, I was amazed on Saturday, I've never seen so many people, I mean, it rivaled the Mountain Festival Parade, there were people everywhere, and people would, I'd see people and they'd say, "We said hi to you," and I said, "That's good," I waved my hand to everybody I could, it's dark, I didn't know, you know, but, but it was, it was really, really amazing, and when we stood up there waiting for Santa, and the people started pouring in, it's like, where did all these people come from? And I'm not good at crowd estimates, I don't know if the Police Department did anything with that, or if we know how many people were down there.
A lot.
Thank you, that's the last time I'll ask that of you.
They gave away 1,500 cups of cocoa.
Oh, 1,500 cups of cocoa.
There was at least 1,500 people there.
Yeah.
That's still a lot.
Yeah, and, and it was just amazing, and I'm so happy to see the festival grow as we go on through the years, and couldn't be happier.
And the depot, I don't know how many cups of cocoa they gave out either, but that was going afterwards, after we got through, which was nice, yeah.
It was a good time, and we needed that as a community too, we're always a shining star, you know, whether it's our downtown, you know, business openings that Key organized...
Did you get any feedback from the business owners?
The business owners were ecstatic, my wife and I visited probably every, every business on Saturday, and standing room only, go inside, I had lunch at Kelsey's today, and talked to Virginia Sheridan, she was extremely happy, I know Key, Cory, others, Don, Jay, they've talked to business owners, and, you know, it's not just having a party, I say this a lot, but it's economic development.
Right.
Right, it's the dollar that's being spent, and the new dollar that's coming into our community, we have a lot of visitors, so, you know, how many are from out of town, who knows, but I, I think, you know, a lot, but it was a good time, and everybody behaved, I mean, we didn't have any safety, security issues that I'm aware of, right? So it was just a really good showcase of our fine city.
Yes. It was a good exposure to our local businesses, for people who tend to go out of town at the drop of a hat, because they're, that's what they do, to get out of town, go shopping, they find out that we've got businesses here, that they could just get it here.
We have some great shops downtown.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
No, I was, I was just going to say, when I go downtown and I don't know anybody, I know it's successful.
Yeah.
Because it's not just the same 100 people who show up every time, so.
Okay, I'm just going to go down the line here, for me, we had some visitors today from the FAA, we had the Western Regional Director, Mr. Mark Hardy, I think his name was, and three of the staff members, here to discuss some, a project that we have had on the books for a while, and they were here to listen, and to get a Regional Director who's got 330 airports under his control, from everything from LAX, San Francisco, all the major western hubs for airports, down to the smallest, ours isn't necessarily the smallest, he has, under his direction, airports in the Pacific, all the way to Guam, and some of the airports are on, they call it an island airport, we learned today that Guam typically has two airports and sometimes three, they do have an aircraft carrier that rolls in, but it was very good to have an interface with these folks, and have faces instead of phone calls, faces and conversations versus a letter that you haven't heard from someone in a while, what's the status that you don't hear, and is it lost, where is, what's the progress, it's nice to have a face-to-face conversation, anything to add on that?
Well, Ashley is, we've talked about this before, Ashley is on the Association of California Airports Board, and they have an annual conference in Lake Tahoe, it's a two-and-a-half-day event, and Mark spoke there, and Ashley and I were able to speak with him about some of the challenges and opportunities that we have at our airport specifically, and invited him to Tehachapi, and he took us up on the offer, and again, to expand, it's California, Arizona, Nevada, Oregon, Washington, Hawaii, Guam, beyond, this guy's a big deal, and he came here with his staff, and he listened to us, and we were able to really get down to the brass tacks and talk about some of the projects that we have in the queue, and some of the frustrations and opportunities that we have, and I think he's going to take action, and we're going, we're going to see some things happening at our airport, some good stuff.
Yes. Ashley, anything else to add? You had a very good participation in this with the, the event in Tahoe, and then today, really impressed.
Not a whole lot more to add to that, but again, like, like you said, he doesn't, he doesn't show up to just any airport, so to have him here was, it was a big deal.
Yeah, you mentioned you'd talked to some of your associates from other airports, and they're wondering what the heck's going on?
They were concerned at first for us, once I explained things, they were, you know, on the same page, and kind of giving us a pat on the back.
Because you said some of those folks hadn't even heard of or met the Regional Director, so we were very pleased to have them visit our town, so. Michael?
Yeah, I had a little personal note from Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus, they had a great time.
Oh, really?
And they loved being there, and all the kids, it was just a fantastic day, they, Mrs. Claus especially was very excited about participating with their, the old man, so it was a kind of good things, and had a lot of, it's just a special day.
Yes.
It was very good.
Christina?
Well, I am just happy to hear all these happy reports, I have a little bit of happy-sad reports, so this will be my last city council meeting, so I'm grateful that I had the opportunity to serve with this amazing group of colleagues, my colleagues here on the city council have been so gracious and so supportive and welcoming me and helping me to serve alongside them, a community that we all love, so I just want to say thank you to the four of you for helping me, teaching me, and growing together, I want to thank the staff, the team here at the city of Tehachapi for doing an amazing job, really qualified, talented people here that love our community and demonstrate that every day in their work ethic, I want to thank Chief, and I want to thank the community, I want to just say that it's been a privilege and an honor to serve here in the city of Tehachapi, and do a little bit to just make sure that we're all going in the right direction and paying attention to, to how our community is coming together, so I will be resigning once I have taken my new role on the Kern Community College District Board of Trustees, and just want to mention that I, I do believe this will be an extension of service to Tehachapi, it's been many decades, I don't know that there has been in my lifetime a college trustee on that board that lived in Tehachapi, I think it's important that we have that representation for my children and all the children in our community to have that advocacy and, and support of an important resource, so I, I very much see this as an opportunity for me to continue the work with all the investment that you have made in me to, to carry that message, so I will miss you all a lot, but I'm very excited about this next step, and, and in all ears, as we work together to make sure we get this right.
Super. Well, Bernie said you were going to make this announcement, so I do have a certificate of recognition.
All right, do we step up here?
Let's go right where everyone else goes.
Okay, I'll plant a trip.
I usually jump over. Well, congratulations on your new endeavor.
Thank you.
And we're happy, we're really pleased that you've been part of our, our, our team here, not just the council, the community, you've done a really super job for us, and I'll just read this here, Christina Scribner, the Tehachapi City Council and the city of Tehachapi would like to recognize and thank you for your commitment to our community while serving as city council member representing District Two since 2020, the Tehachapi City Council thanks you for your dedication to our city and your willingness to give of your time and energy while serving the city with compassion and integrity, we appreciate your input as a member of the Tehachapi City Council, and we look forward to the many years of collaboration and continued success in our new, in your new representative role.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Wonderful.
Can I invite the other council members to come so we can get one nice team photo?
That'd be wonderful.
That's right.
I like that.
You didn't want to jump? Sorry, I'm coming now.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thanks you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
All righty.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you, I'm going to miss you guys. Yeah, you'll see me around.
Mayor Smith, as you're taking your seats, as Mrs. Scribner pointed out, she's still a council member currently, and she will remain a council member until she takes her seat with the College Community District, and she'll let us know, we expect that to be next week, and then the following meeting, next regular scheduled council meeting, will be presenting a report to you asking for permission, we have two options, one is to appoint, the other is to host a special election, as you know, special elections cost money, we're going to recommend that you accept applications, we can advertise for Scribner's district, accept applications, and then appoint somebody from that list, the clock starts, the 60-day clock starts when Mr. Scribner resigns, we expect that to be next week, so we have 60 days to take applications and then make an appointment, so just as a summary of what's to come.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Okay, we do have a closed session, and if there's anything to report, we'll come back out here and do so. Thank you all for coming.